You're all set to go, Mr. Vice Chair.
Welcome to the planning board meeting of April 20th. I'm your substitute chair. Jason is away, so we'll have to live with my moderation here today. And we have a quorum with Harry and Bob. So there's three of the five members. That's our quorum. And we will start with number one, public comment. Do we have public on it? Z is still connecting. Looks like perhaps no public comment at the beginning here. Alrighty then, let's move on. Item number two was to be discussion status of landing group and due to advice of council, we are not going to say anything about that today. And we'll see what develops in future meetings. And so we're on to item number three, review and approve letter of support for municipal vulnerability grant. I don't know if John Lopez was planning to join us, but if not, I'm happy to lead what I understand about it. I did send around the expression, the expression of interest memo earlier today. And I have some concerns about that. Can I screen share, Rob?
Should be also.
So here's the concern when you talk about the project summary. There's a lot of yada yada about what it's about, but the punchline to me is this. How you measure the success and it says identified by prioritize and preliminary provide preliminary scopes and costs of nature based solution projects and fluctuations that benefit the environmental justice and climate vulnerability communities. Lotable enough, we should do environmental justice and climate vulnerable communities. When you look at the definition of climate vulnerable community, it's those who have lower adaptive capacity or higher exposure and sensitivity due to access to transportation, income disability, racial inequity, health stress, status of age. This is not what I had expected for what's a vulnerable, what is vulnerable to climate. This is a population of disadvantaged folks. And that's fine, but if you restrict the study to just PJ and CB, that doesn't cover most of what's the problem in Rockport. So I have some concerns about this and I wrote to John Lopez earlier, they have not, you got a response. Bob and Harry, do you have any different take on what's going on here?
Well, go ahead, Harry.
No, go ahead, Bob.
Oh yeah, it seems like they're going to grade these projects and and allow the money based on based on what appears to be two different factors, but I think is really just one factor. Which is, would we maybe we could talk about access to transportation? Health status and age, perhaps, income level, perhaps, with a lot of the seniors we have here, but yeah, I don't know how much luck we're going to have in acquiring some of this money. Yeah. And then my other question was, did Mr. Lopez have any thoughts about projects right up right at the tip of his tongue?
This is the only information I have. I just saw this expression of interest statement and told him I had some concerns and I hope I'll hear back from him.
Yeah.
Harry, anything from you?
You know, I mean, I agree with what you've just highlighted here, meaning prior paragraph or actually, let's see. Let's go after the numbered paragraphs.
Should I scroll up?
The project, the project will organize around public outreach activities and events to gather input, engage the community and share engaging EJ and CV communities, including the local commercial fishing. Low income and artist communities will be a central focus. That's an interesting group.
Yeah.
Arguably, two, two groups are included of those three that are mentioned in that last sentence that are a resident in, in, in Rockport. But it's just. I don't feel comfortable signing on to that.
Yeah. I agree. When I think of all the things that I would like to have as coastal vulnerability in the classical sense of that word, there's things like, you know, storm surge coming into Flatledge Quarry for our water supply and the whole situation at Long Beach and neither one of those are covered by EJ or CV by their definition. So this seems oddly narrow to me. I'd like to see a much broader application. And so I have trouble getting behind this. Other thoughts?
Yeah, well, I missed that paragraph on the commercial fishing and artist communities there. So that could be, that could be a draw. I mean, I just think about bearskin neck and how that situation could it's one thing to have boats in the harbor, but I think about this two and a half foot sea level rise and see that the water is already about 12 inches from going over the T wharf, I think. The commercial fishing is going to have a real problem if the wharfs aren't high enough to unload fish. And all of all the little artists studios we have on bearskin neck will have a problem if they can't be accessed because the water at the low point there, right as you enter the neck is, is not good. So I don't know. They do seem to have a focus on the environmental justice there, but they do include the community community side of it. So I, I think it would be good to hear what, what he had in mind, if anything, that there's any projects that, that would immediately leap out of this is to, to study.
Just, just looking at.
Go ahead.
You know, the top of the document. Have we already missed the boat here? I mean, the deadline to submit this form for more detailed feedback is Friday, January 20th. But the final deadline to submit this form to receive more limited, well, I guess it's just a feedback. I don't know. When, when is this, when is this supposed to be submitted?
They, they did say that these, the dates that they're mentioning and the funding amounts are fungible. They're, they're not necessarily going to hold on. So I'm assuming that he, he thinks we still have a shot at submitting this.
The, the RFR period tendatively expected to open end of March of 23. So I assume we're somewhere in the middle of that.
Yeah.
John Lopez sent an email to Jason Shaw, I think this morning, saying he'd like to wrap this up next week is why he's trying to get these letters of support. So there's some sort of deadline in his head about next week or shortly thereafter. I see, you can recognize our Zoom host, Rob.
Yeah, I've been helping John just a little bit with some map products as well as helping with the letter of support from the DPW. So just a, a two quick things on that. The study area is intended to be the entire coastline of Rockport, anything that's affected by the AE or VE zones along the coast. And the with particular interest in, in bearskin neck, I think, because of the overlap of the artist community, the EJ pop and the fact that it's coastal. And then the application itself, I think is due in about a week and a half at this point. So he's gotten about 50 letters of support so far and wants to wrap up that effort next week to be able to submit them alongside the application within the next couple of weeks.
Well, it's good that he has an intent to cover the whole coastline, but just doesn't read that way to me. I can see it easily covering bearskin neck because there's some EJ CV stuff there. But boy, I can't see it doing things like Flatledge Quarry or Long Beach even. I would prefer to see what the application looks like and then support that one rather than this preliminary thing unless we hear otherwise from John. Other thoughts?
I, I'm okay with that.
What do you think, Bob?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can't wait and see. This is just early feedback. So doesn't preclude that we won't get accepted.
Okay.
The final grant. So we can do that.
Do we need a motion on this or we'll just I guess defer it.
Take the can down the road.
Is that a motion to kick the can?
I moved it. We kicked the can down the road.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's gonna look good in the minutes, isn't it?
Yeah. We're gonna rephrase.
Yeah.
Take a friendly amendment right there, Harry.
Should we make a?
We, we postpone our consideration of this this matter until our next meeting.
Schedule. A second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Harry.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Tom, I, we are officially kicked down the road in more acceptable terms. That's all this on our normal agenda. We've got the member items coming up. Who has a member item?
Nothing for me. The I had forwarded that information. On the one second here, the affordable housing stuff. Bring that up here on my phone. Second. So I, I had forwarded everyone the information on Lexington's TOV for the MBTA that they, they submitted and it was, it was interesting to look at. It's pretty thoughtful and they always obviously have a little bit more density than we do, but if anybody had a chance to look at, look at what they did, I think they were required to have about 2,000 units. Total new. But they did, they did sort of go around to six or eight or nine sites around the town and specifically called out certain sites for low density, medium density, and even one, one high rise area near, near a more major route. And it was pretty good. I think it's just, they had, they had a great slideshow that they did for the community to sort of get them educated on the the things that was worth taking a look at. And thinking about it for our, our future. Our future presentations to the, to the town in public hearings and whatnot. It's some similar slide shows to the examples we had where they showed pictures of density in the, in the existing apartment buildings and condos and around town, which was pretty similar to some of the things that we had done already. So we'll see how they do that. I don't think there's been any response by the state for what they, what they put in. But I, I copied, I think the entire text of their, their motion as well in that email. We could take a look at it.
Okay. Anything else on member items? I could say a couple of things about affordable housing. We've had on Tuesday, two interesting meetings, community preservation met. And we learned that the $500,000 application for affordable housing by I forget the name of the group that Denise and Sarah are in. They have withdrawn that because their specific project is now out of reach with the Baptist church being put on the open market.
Yeah.
So that's out. And then that same evening, Tuesday, there was a meeting, first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust. And Diane Villa is in the audience and I don't know, she'd like to say something about that. I was there, but I think she might know more about it. Diane, do you have anything to say about the first meeting?
I thought it was a good first meeting. We kind of have made our agenda for the second to look into some, some other things. I think it's going to take a little bit of time to, to create our vision statement. Where are we going? What's our lane going to be in the continuum of affordable housing? How are we going to identify which one of those pieces we want or two or three or whatever? In the structure of you know, how are we going to be a developer or funding to, I mean, there's so many ways to go on affordable housing. So I think it's going to be a great to hear everybody and ferret out what I think, you know, people really want to do. I was glad to see that there were people in the audience. I thought that they participated well. And Harry is our, I mean, Herm is our, is our chairperson who agreed to do that at least for a year. And the rest of us will take roles as we you know, as we, as, as we progress. So I think it's a nice group. Five is, is a nice group. We could maybe have a couple more. I don't know, but we have to look at that bylaw change. That's one of the things that's on our agenda is to look at the, the bylaw change. So.
Yeah. So the, the other fungible issue that we'll have to talk about is as it might cross relate to this stuff we're working with on the planning board side for the MBTA section 3A is they, they basically have limits in their limits that aren't particularly strict, but, but they, they have limits on the affordable housing side that say like the, the normal cap for affordable housing might be 10%, but we, we depending on the community's needs and certain special aspects of the community, that could could be approved for higher and I think up to 15% I believe of, of the total MBTA percentage of, of units. But that's a discussion we're going to have to have with the THC. CD in, in the future, but.
It was 20%, but I don't know that for sure.
Yeah. Well, I know 20 is the absolute maximum, but there, as I read in deeper into the language of the, the three A thing, it, it got more murky there. So we need to look at that and see exactly what, what we're talking about. So we'll, we'll hopefully cross coordinate and also, I'm also in the, the committee as well. And I think we need to, we will need to bring in probably some, some banking expertise and housing, public housing expertise as far, as far as we, we have, we have Mr. Suzon on the committee, but bringing in people to just understand where we sit right now with acceptable affordable units, where we need to go so that we can explain to people the, the, the current pending threat of any 40B development that could come upon us, which will not need to will not need to comply with our height, density and all of our other zoning regulations necessarily. I think people don't understand that that's currently out there and it could happen anywhere in, in Rockport theoretically and that this goal of, of getting there will help avoid that, that kind of situation. Where we have a more friendly situation.
There's a great example going on right now in Hamilton. We're a developer and a landowner there have been trying to get a, something like a 50 unit age restricted development next to the Chabaco watershed. It's not in the watershed, it's outside of the watershed, but there's been a tremendous effort, organized effort to, to fight the project. And I see that one ending up as a 40B project. And the town of Hamilton will not have the type, the kind of control that it believes it has. And end up with something potentially potentially more dense than what, what the what the original proposal was seeking to do. And that was, and that's an open space subdivision, by the way. So there's all kinds of space that, that won't be developed on that parcel. In the past, part of it had been leased to, in a budding farm, farm stand. And they got involved in the mix. And so it's, it's turned, it turned ugly a long time ago, unfortunately.
Too bad.
So I think, you know, you want to, you want to watch that one closely because that's something that could happen to Rockport.
Yep.
So do we see anything here that would indicate more revisions in our zoning bylaw? Or is that not part of this mix at it yet?
I don't think it's part of it, but you know, my, my, my view on future development in Rockport is it's not likely to happen. Even around, you know, in, within the TOD, TOVOD district overlay. My opinion is, is that when you combine the land cost, the acquisition cost and the development cost associated with the site, there isn't enough economic return to prospective developer given our height limitation in town.
Spoken like a banker.
It's my opinion, but yeah, no, and I just, the numbers don't work.
No.
Numbers won't work. So I don't see anything coming in through the front door.
All right, if there's good one.
That's something that the Affordable Housing Trust has to figure out what the, what the carrot is there to make something more like the granite street developments happen a little bit more frequently than every 10 years. Or whatever it's been. Probably been longer than that.
And you pointed out what the density of Granite Street crossing is. It's not crossing, is it crossing?
I'm not sure.
Whatever the name of that, five Granite Street.
Yeah. That was about, that was about 21, 22 units per acre.
Yeah, that's, that's illustrative because I wouldn't have thought that's the right number.
Yeah. And I, I, like I said, I was talking in the meeting there about the, the the moment that I was talking to some locals in the Will Struck Cafe there the other day and they were just like, were really concerned about, you know, the development around the whistle stop mall and the density and the traffic and blah, blah, blah. And then almost in the next sentence, they said, why can't they do something like, like down on Granite Street there? And I said, well, you know, that is, that is even more that's not only more dense than what the MBTA is asking us to provide, but it is also completely, well, not completely age restricted, but it's it's, I think all affordable units, right? And it's one way, one, one way or one fashion or another. Whether it's senior housing or affordable units. So it's a, it's a very different animal, but it's happening and it, it looks good. And I think it, you know, reasonably fits in to that, to that neighborhood. And that was a property, I guess, that was ripe for the picking because it was sort of abandoned and whatnot, but we don't have so many of those, but, but it, it did give them a pretty good opportunity to come in there with something nice.
I think, I think there are sometimes other opportunities. I mean, I, last summer, a large parcel that was, was sold. I don't, there, I think there's 12 rental units in there and they have room enough to build a mirror image of it. It's between Forest and Norwood Court. It's a gigantic piece of property. I don't know who bought it. I don't know what their plans are for it. It was, my understanding, sold for just over a million dollars, which was shocking to me because of such a big, something big could go in there. And I, and I had a conversation, when I had a conversation with Andrew from Harbor Light, he said that his opinion was that 20% affordable housing within the TOV district would make it doable in his opinion for a group like his. So I thought that was an interesting, you know, I don't know how to do the numbers, but that was his, that was his numbers.
Yeah. Well, they know their stuff, you know, their stuff. And they know this area, which is good. I, I have some other friends that work for Trinity down in Boston, but they're mainly developing stuff in Dorchester and Ashmont, that area in the city, more urban sites, but but it's also, you know, where land is even more expensive. They're making some, making some things happen there. I'm going to try to see if we can get to have him track up here and talk with us one night.
That'd be great.
Yes. Oh, Tom, you got muted somehow.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. I'm back.
Okay.
Let's move to the final public comment and could continue on this topic or whatever else comes up. Anybody have something to say? Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian 95 Granite Street. Interested in your remarks about the train station area as affordable, possibly affordable housing. There's nothing in the zoning that you wrote for it that would lead anyone to believe that affordable housing was part of it. And indeed, since it's by right and the trigger for affordable housing in the zoning code, housing balance is the issuance of a special permit, there would be no affordable housing if any such thing was built there. There was discussion about meeting the state's 10% requirement to get out from under the outrage of 40B projects. Years ago, I did a resolution for the town meeting, asking the state to rescind that law. It came within six votes of passing and would have passed if the planning board had not opposed it. They later offered a resolution asking the state to revise it rather than not that our wishes have anything to do with what will happen, clearly not. But you talk about the train station as possibly providing affordable housing. That isn't the way it will pan out with the current zoning. And if anything were built there, it might or might not contribute to the 10% that, that would get you out from under, but more likely not. And when you talk about more housing for, to meet the state's requirements, the 657 units of multi-housing, that may or may not be built as Jason Shaw has numbers of times admitted. So on the one hand, So on the one hand, you're saying that all of this is necessary to oblige the state. Then we're told that it's necessary because it's good for the town, but if none of it is built, it doesn't um. Get you anything towards getting out from under 40B. That should be, you know. Front and center, any calculations about what you're doing. Uh, the affordable housing is a real problem, but what the state has done is a a real problem of another sort. A bureaucratic nightmare on top of and confusing what was difficult enough already. That's all.
Thank you, Toby. Some something to say about there. I I don't know if we can. Do much about it in the current uh. Posture we are in with the zoning revisions, but maybe there are some things could could still be further revised. Don't know.
So To- To- Toby's approach is rather curious, so. We should mandate affordable housing, build as much affordable housing as we can to get to 10% so we could know, so we can therefore. Not build any more affordable housing. Hmm. Hadn't thought about that.
Well, I think it's a matter of building it under our control versus out of our control.
Yeah, I mean, with with five. Granite Street. 21 or 23 units being added to affordable housing. You know, we're gonna have a significant increase in relative terms. Um, which. You know, in combination with a housing production plan. We have some basis of an argument. That we're making strides towards the 10% goal. It helps in this case that we're as low as we are. I don't know what those units get us to. Do they get us to 5%? I doubt it.
No, I I heard a speaker from uh. Harbor Light say. Or was it from Chappa? One of the speakers we had at the Affordable Housing Coalition said that we moved from. Something like 3.9 to something like 4.5 with the addition of five grand. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think that's about right. So we're not quite halfway there and. And so.
All right, then. Any other public comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call. Harry.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Tom, I. Motion to adjourn is passed. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks for.
See you in a couple of weeks. Have a great night, everybody.
You'll have Jason to kick around that time.